All right, good evening. I'd like to call the September 14th, 2015 school committee meeting to order. As a reminder for those present that we are being held by the West Virginia Center tonight, and we will start as always with the questions.
..........................................
Hey, we're full house tonight, exciting. And we will get to the student recognitions in just a couple of minutes. But first, this is the first school committee meeting following the annual town meeting. This is the evening when the school committee reorganizes. And so at this time, I would entertain a motion for the position of chair.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Charles Johnson as chairman of the school.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, Mr. Donovan. The gavel was yours, so.
I already made a mess here, Charles.
Well, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Carol for the wonderful job she did as chairperson through a very busy year, very tough year, so thank you so much. This is the beginning of our thanks, a ceremonial gavel.
Oh, thank you so much.
If I threw up this, rant the gavel then.
I got it, thank you so much.
Thank you. And we would like to also continue with our reorganization. And we will next entertain a nomination for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Tony Monahan for vice chair.
I'll share him.
Any discussion? Okay, go to the paper, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to entertain a nomination for somebody to be a clerk.
I'd like to nominate Allette Giuseppe Giav.
Any discussion?
About a second.
Second. All in favor? So I think we would like to move on now with our student recognition. A lot of thank you students for being here with us. And we would like to... Who is our first student group to recognize?
Yes, thank you. So the first group we'd like to recognize tonight is we have many of our students here who are part of our Elementary Math League. And this has become an annual tradition, bringing the participants in the math league in. It's a wonderful program, great experience for our kids, run entirely by parent volunteers. I don't believe he's here this evening, but I do want to acknowledge Mark Pusinoga, who began the math league about 10 years ago, I think, and has been very dedicated to the program. So in addition to being a wonderful experience for our kids, there are significant ragging rights at stake. And so this year, it's my pleasure to tell you who the winning teams were at each grade, at grade three, grade four, and grade five. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the names of the folks on the winning team. And kids, I'm going to ask you, as I read your name, if you could come up and stand in this area, and we'll recognize you, and we want to take a nice team photograph. And then actually, Mrs. Tobin is going to meet you in the lobby afterwards, so that you can get your certificates and parents, so you don't have to stay. Okay, so this year, the team, the grade three winners were from the Martha Jones School. Team members were Jacob Czerzak, Matthew Matthews, Michael Chow, Lucas Rizzi, Madison Travers, Maxiano, Isabel Walsh. Yes, okay, we're asking... We're here today?
Do you guys like that?
All right, we're all going to look at Ms. Worsches here and smile. All right, and our winning team for grade four is from the Downey School. So we have Matthew Bagdassarian, Kevin Bai, Jasmine Bijou, Mia Chafee, Adriana Cirillo, Claire Doherty, Bedonk? Ayam? Did I get it right? Tom Joyce, Matthew Lowney, Elias Mansour, Brianna Maxwell, Chris Rappel, Sadia Raju, Avik Sadia Raju, Asher Schillen, Ben Tang, Melissa Yang. She's sized out from here. I'm told second year in a row. All right, and our grade five team is also from Martha Jones. First, Landon Bear, Jacob Berliner, Jacob Kaplan, Clemens Krokowski, Audrey Lake, Wesley Lee, Emily Ma, Brendan Matthews, Madeline Resha, Nicholas DeSoney, Hunter Sang, Jasper Ju.
Mrs. Parks, Landon Bear was also our all-around winner.
Oh. And Emily. Really? We have another student recognition tonight. So we are recognizing tonight two students from Thurston who are our middle school scholar leaders. And Mr. Gianetti from the middle school is just going to say a couple words about this honor. And I think I said Denise Collins and Mary Donovan, teachers at Thurston who are here tonight. Thank you for being here, I assume, to support our honorees. Mr. Gianetti.
We actually have four scholar leaders.
Oh, four scholar leaders, I'm sorry.
So scholar leaders are selected by the faculty. I'd like to thank them for their hard work this year, being here this evening. And students selected are picked for their academic achievement, their exemplary leadership around the school, and just overall being core value students who represent everything that's good about Thurston Middle School. So we'd like to recognize Owen Dunton. Come on up, please.
And I understand we had a reception for these students before the meeting? Excellent. Thank you to everyone for being here. And if you want to go get your certificate, this would be a brief... To make your move.
Thank you for coming to support this. It's a pleasure teaching in our school. Enjoying your class. Some nice people that you can't do something.
Yeah. Got it, got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. So can I just say something? I don't think we welcome our late tour. Let's just put this down. All right, so we are welcoming two members to the school committee tonight. So first, we have Plankton, welcome. Also, I'll turn it over briefly to Mr. Bevan, who's going to introduce us to our new student.
Yeah, it gives me great pleasure to introduce you to Chris Bezdevenu. He is a junior, rising to be a senior this year. He's been a wonderful leader in our building for a very long time. He's been on legislative council since I think the day he walked into our building, and has been instrumental in passing some really critical legislation, this task specifically. He's also on the state advisory council for students. He also is attending boys state this year. He's a football player, does a great deal around the building, and is just a really excellent leader. I think he's going to be an asset to the community.
And I feel like the knowledge of who is here tonight, an alum of former's school committee office.
Still a few members of our board who ever comes back.
All right, so next item, just would like to give you a brief update on our building project process. So as we all know, we had a successful vote at town meeting, very exciting, to move forward in the process with MSBA. The voters approved funding for the feasibility study. So that was excellent news. And, you know, our thanks to all of the residents who came out to support our schools. It's very important to have that level of engagement. And I have to say, I felt like it was a resounding yes at town meeting. It was really very, very encouraging. And now the fun begins. So we have several things that we need to accomplish over the next few months. So on July 1st, what's called our eligibility period, not July 1st, I'm sorry, June 1st, our eligibility period with the MSBA began. And as you can see here on the screen, there are several deliverables that the district needs to produce for the MSBA in order for them to vote us into the next phase, which would be the feasibility study. So the great news is, is that I would say the major deliverable of the eligibility period is securing that feasibility study funding. And we've already accomplished that, which is sort of the major hurdle. So we're ahead of the game in that sense. So one of the things that is an action item for us tonight is that we need to execute a document that's called the initial compliance certificate, which we included in your packet. It's basically the legal agreement between us and MSBA. Where effectively, we are agreeing to abide by the rules. There is a law in Massachusetts that the MSBA operates under, so where they get their authority. And so you'll see that that initial compliance certificate references different aspects of the law and the accompanying regulation. So that would be one to do. The second sort of big task is the formation of the school building committee. And that needs to happen by July 31st. So I shared with you, the MSBA basically prescribes the composition of the committee. So there are certain roles that have to be fulfilled. So at least one member of the school committee, for example, needs to be on the committee. The superintendent is on the committee. Someone who is certified in terms of municipal purchasing, such as he, needs to be on the committee, somebody from the selectmen. And then people with particular expertise, so they'd like us to find a resident who, you know, maybe has some experience with engineering or certain roles. So it's something that we need to give some thought to in terms of putting together that committee in the next, you know, one and a half or so. So I don't know if there are any thoughts about that process, or whatever.
Any thoughts people have for, you know, we're reaching out to many of the people already involved in this process, the voices suggested as we roll on.
So perhaps we might, there may be quite a few people who are interested in which way we're going to set people on. I hope there are a few interested. Perhaps we could handle it much like we do when we formulate other committees, superintendents and people who are involved in research or people applying. So we have to make sure we get it out to the public, particularly for votes, the engineer, for example.
We have a really short window.
We do, but how also would we?
No, I know. Well, maybe we should have a deadline, I mean, by the end of the month, they would have to submit a letter of interest.
Yeah, I think that's great. And I think we would need to make sure that we clearly frame up for people what they're volunteering for, because, you know, this committee is the group that steers us through the project from beginning to end. So it is a significant and long-term commitment to join the school building committee, and I would want people to understand that. And also maybe to delineate for people that there will be many, many other ways to provide input into the project, right? We'll be engaging the community. This group has a sort of official role in overseeing the process.
We have a timeline?
Well, so we have to get, we have to submit the names to the MSBA by the end of July.
Okay, but if we're going to, if we're going to delineate for these people what they're meant to do, shouldn't we have some kind of a schedule?
Oh, yeah.
So how many meetings it will be, when they will start?
Number of years?
Yeah. Number of years, exactly.
It's going to be eight years.
Right. It is going to be years. And to be clear, that this is the committee that forms once we start the feasibility study. So the work doesn't actually begin until the middle of next year. So yes, I can do that. I've been in contact with some other, some superintendents in other towns who are already processed, just to get a sense from them about how frequently the communities need and whatnot. Mike Gillette has also reached out to me, because of course some town officials need to serve on the committee, so we want to talk about that process. And I think we need to make sure that we're following, you know, all the rules put out by the MSBA, and also in accordance with town bylaws and any other governing factors.
Also, just ideas of community involvement. This committee will be limited to how much, but we need to have a lot of other community input options, you know? And I think, I mean, we've done it for the superintendent, and so all of the, all of our ideas of how do we, down the road, get all the input we can get, you know, that will be very important. Yeah, just forms and just follow away, you know? And as we have things to present, what do you think about this? Just to have that process, which is terribly important, and just how do we organize it? How do we set that up? And also, right now, to let people know, this is a long time thing, it's going to, we need a lot of input. Just so you're not on this committee doesn't mean you're not having input. You know, there's going to be many opportunities. I think this committee will be reaching out for a lot of that, so we need to organize various types of input, you know, for people. But there's no early on what their concerns are, and as the thinking develops, I would suggest.
So is that something, will this committee be formulated some way for other people down to their own head, or is that something that we're going to do?
Well, I would need to discuss that, but my assumption is that the school committee is the committee that is going to be engaging, you know, presidents primarily about sort of our vision for the schools and what we're looking for. But clearly, we're going to have school committee representation on the school building committee, and that will be an important component of the communication.
So maybe what we have in a, the school committee will organize some type of form or whatever, get that information, and then guess on from this committee.
A lot of forms, I think.
A lot of forms.
And I think this is badly for the state, this is the states to work with, and they want to see, you got all the, everybody in the town, officials involved. So that's more that process. But, I mean, we're ultimately going to make the decisions, and we need to be sure we're getting the input. But it's for us to pass it on to this committee, too.
I mean, I think it's important to have what their role is. These will be us, or these will be you, and these will be any other parties.
Right.
I think the people may, I want people coming with the right assumptions. I mean, similar like when you make your principal, so there's committee, but ultimately it's your decision, right? Similar to that. I don't know what this role is, but just make it clear that's the goal.
And with the help of other towns to say, you know, what happens in the first year? Or this is like, this may be a five-year, second year, what could you expect to learn in the second year, the third year? Just so people, this isn't going to be a slam dunk in a year. It's a long process with a lot of things we have to go through as far as input.
But it's interesting, since they're not going to meet for regardless how long, we have to, we have to make up as a committee with the state by the end of July?
Yes, and they do have a mechanism for changing the members of the committee. So, I mean, for instance, let's say the committee exists for five years, you know, it might be that people come and go. And they basically have a provision where if you change members within 30 days, you just have to notify the whole week on the committee. So, yes. So if this is due to the end of July, that's a really tight window to solicit community interest, which means, you know, we would probably have to have all of those statements by mid-July, which means, I mean, it's the latest, I would say.
We can't, because most people are on the town.
But first, we need to put something together to distribute, right? Then we need to circulate it and socialize it. I mean, one suggestion would be that they have the prescribed roles, and most of them are, you know, school community members, superintendent, selectmen. You know, I mean, it's clear who those people would be. You know, we can submit something, kind of checking all the boxes by July 1st, and then if we wanted to.
Change it?
Add.
Yeah.
I think that might be a way to go. So we could, could we basically, go to TBA, you know, those two spots? I don't know about that. I mean, let me just look, you know, like school principal.
Well, those are, some of those are.
Those are going to be pretty. I mean, the community, the people from the town. Looks like there's two of them. Right, two. Right. The member knowledgeable in the educational mission and the architecture, engineering.
And the local CEO.
John and Jane Doe. Yeah. Well, I would even suggest the member knowledgeable in educational mission, I mean, that could be somebody who works in the district or school committee, but member of community with architecture, engineering, and/or construction experience.
And local CEO, the chief executive, number two.
I think that's probably like the chair of the selectmen. Right? I think that's what they mean.
Oh, okay, I'm thinking like in business.
Right.
You're thinking in business.
Yeah, well, I was expecting like.
Exactly. So I think the member of the community with architecture, engineering, and/or construction experience, and then other, are the two things that are wide open. And the other seem fairly.
Doesn't seem as bad?
Yeah. Fairly clear.
Well, then, do we want to solicit, or do we want to?
Well.
And we want, yeah, because, I mean, it sounds like we need people with very specific skills, right?
So we do both?
Solicit and?
I mean solicit, but also approach people that we think to submit a statement of interest. I mean, because if we solicit, you know, then it opens it up to everybody, but if nobody...
Nobody knows about it either, right?
So I think it's worth putting it in the newspaper, just to say to the public, we're looking for, it's important, and if you have an interest, please let us know about it. And you have to do that, and that, if we know people, if people approach us. Well, there are people that have already, I think, approached, too. They've shown interest for a while. There were people on our community forums who actually said that they're looking for somebody who doesn't have a deal with them. Yeah, okay.
I just feel comfortable with someone in favor that says we're looking for important advice, have these skills, and use all of the people who've talked to us already. There's only a couple of people we're looking for at the moment, but we really need a lot of people later on.
So would you like me to take a, sort of drafting something that is an explanation of a rule, you know, some sense of parameters?
Just get it out.
Get it out?
The phone number of contact.
You're going to put them in a paper from paper.
All right, yeah, I will, I will take care of that. And then. And make sure you say it's not a pain position. Not a, not a pain position, a volunteer position, that's right.
Long term.
So, and then you can see there's. So, and then you, you can see there are a number of other things, but I, I think that these other deliverables are really things that we would take care of from the central office. So we've gotta submit them, an educational profile questionnaire that has to do with our programs and our current structure. And, you know, things about enrollment information, so they're looking for information about our, our current enrollment. And then any information that we may have about projects on the horizon, something like that. Based on the conference call we had with our coordinator at MSBA, they're gonna take that information, and you can see that we have to, um, so we submit enrollment information, and then it says enrollment certification executed, and there's several months. That's because there's a process there where the MSBA has people with expertise in looking at demographics and enrollment, you know, about the fertility rates and market conditions and whatnot. And we have a process where we go back and forth until we agree upon a number that we're building for in the future. And that is important, because once you agree on, on that, then that's, that's it going forward.
They look at the whole district?
They, well, they're, yes, they're gonna talk to us about more than just the school.
So that occurs in the eligibility phase, not in the physical, correct?
Yeah, yeah, they wanna know what to expect.
So during the summer, we can keep in touch, we meals on what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Normally meeting until September, but just to keep everybody up to date on everything.
I mean, the, the current routine and capital maintenance plan, for instance, I mean, Heath is already starting to work on that. Those are some things we generate here. Yes.
Thank you.
Journey begins. Okay, uh, next item, cell phone tower lease update, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Proctor to talk about that.
Sure, I'd like to do a brief update on the cell tower lease and some highlights of its history, and those who are here, I want to. Correct lease that we have is with AT&amp;T, is due to, uh, due to expire in July of 2020. Prior to that point, the committee will need to decide whether or not to pursue another lease, or to just let this lease expire. The cell tower itself was originally constructed, installed in the year 2000. Now, I know from your memos that you had from, it says 2010, but that's actually when we made the, the actual first installation was in 2000. So during that time, after the installation, the cell tower was inspected and tested, both by AT&amp;T as well as an independent contractor, and it was found to be well within safety regulations, both state and federal. In 2012, it was tested again, and again, it was found to be well within, um, safety limits, um, both federal, state, state and federal. Now, we received correspondence recently from, from a concerned resident in town, with some materials that they provided to us. Regarding studies that have been conducted from the effects of radio frequency radiation, or RFR, from cell towers, and it's linked to certain types of cancers, so that's a concern. I reviewed the research materials, and I'd be happy to provide them to you if you don't already have them. But basically, the research presents emerging evidence of a potential health effects of RFR, radio frequency radiation, from cell towers on lab animals, so it shows some, you know, resulting of cancers in lab animals due to that. Now, concerns similar to these were brought up in 2012, which is one of the reasons why we did that, that test. And at that time, we brought an independent company, and that company's name was Isotrop LLC, and it performed what is called a radio frequency energy exposure service. And I think it's important for us to take a look at, just a blurb from the executive summary from that report. And what it said was, Isotrop measured individual radio frequency emissions that were the strongest at the site. These emissions included the emissions from the AT&amp;T tower on the school roof itself, the cell tower on an adjacent property, as well as digital television signals from NIDA, from the towers of NIDA. So in aggregate, these measured emissions inside the school and on the ground were substantially less, substantially less than one one thousandth of the applicable safety limits, both federal and state. So it's, it's clear that, you know, we're not only within the safety division, but we're well below the safety limits, um, of both federal and state. Now, from a budgetary standpoint, if I put my budget hat on, um, we receive about thirty-four thousand dollars a year in funding from the cell tower. And that goes to offset administrative technology, which is an offset in the budget, as well as, um, maintenance of our website. So it's not, given the overall budget, it's not a significant amount of money, and one that, like, over the next couple of years, we could roll in to the budget if you were to decide, but, you know, if you didn't want the cell tower anymore. But there are also a couple of other issues that you might want to consider. If we do decide not to pursue another lease, the self-coverage is gonna be impacted both at the middle school and here at the high school, both these sites, as well as, you know, around town, for us, at these two sites. And, um, you know, we do business, we all have cell phones, we do business, administrative duties on that. But something to consider is that also in the case of an emergency, if we need to use our cell phones and we don't have coverage, that may be, that may present a problem, especially if we need to be outside the building, and the emergency's happening inside the building, and we need to speak with authorities or other schools in addition. So those are just some things to consider, yes?
Years ago, when this first came out, right, I remember a conversation about putting, uh, putting the towers on the lights at the, at the high school field. Is that something we would consider?
I don't know if that would reflect on later concerns, that would, well, because it's still a cell tower, it's still a cell tower.
But it's not old with the snow, it's on the field.
Yes, right, but, um, it depends, it depends on how you look at the research. So, you know, there's a comb, uh, like, cell towers on top of the school, so the cell signal doesn't go down into the school, basically, because the cell signal goes up, up from the cell tower.
So it's not affecting what's under the.
The least amount of radiation, what they call the radiation, goes down, most of it goes up. Because that's the idea of cell towers, because they wanna, they wanna cover the largest area that they possibly can.
So, I mean, logistically, we could put them on the lights, I, I think, what I'm curious, there may be some, that still may raise questions.
It's still, yeah.
And we don't, maybe don't know the answers.
It might be worse, too, because if it goes this way, it's gonna affect the high school and the middle school. Okay, I'm, but I did.
Where's, you mentioned there's a cell tower on the adjacent property, where's that?
It's at the church, uh, beside, at St. Anthony's Church.
And they have, they have some, I think, they have some open spaces, right?
They do, they do.
So they could go there?
Yeah, potentially AT&amp;T or whoever to go into that slot.
AT&amp;T could be a separate one.
So would that give us as much coverage as part of this town?
I, I don't know, because I don't think it's as high as, as the first.
It's kind of in the colonies.
So when does it move, from a, from a school issue to a town issue?
Well, I mean, technically, the question for the school committee is, do you want to renew the lease or not, I mean, to release, right? So that, that's, that's the, the question before the school committee. And, you know, at that point, it really isn't our job to broker for AT&amp;T where they're, sometimes it goes. You know, really, our purpose tonight is to just bring to your attention that the lease is up in 2020, and so we wanna bring that to your attention with plenty of time. We don't have to decide anything tonight, but if there are steps that we wanna take that we can validate in that decision-making process in a year, um, we should do that.
Are there other, uh, excuse me, are there other school districts or colleges or other places where there are kids around, you know, that have this issue, or have had it, or studied it?
Not down where I am.
As I'm sure like in Boston, Cambridge, they've probably got a lot of cell towers, and a lot, a lot of research going on in cancer. I mean, has that, has that been an issue, have people studied it, to say it's unsafe in any way for those apartments?
Well, part of the materials that were provided cited the World Health Organization. And, you know, part of their recommendation from one of their doctors was that, you know, it shouldn't be put near schools, on schools, by hospitals, or by residences. So it's, well, I mean, so it's, yet there's still everywhere, so.
We all use our cell phones.
So, I guess a couple of things I'd wanna know more, one is, there's a lot of, my understanding, not being expert, is there's a lot of federal law that governs these. So I wanna understand, like, can we just say goodbye to the lease, or is this gonna result in worrying about? Maybe, I just wanna get some legal advice on this, because federal law, I think, does govern this, govern the self, this, back in the eighties, they put in place a bunch of federal laws that govern this, I just wanna have a legal opinion about this, that's what I'm asking you.
There's no, AT&amp;T does not have an extension, right, on all these, right?
No, we already, um, had the extension.
They exercise it. And they're further.
It was ten, and then we did it for another ten years in 2020s, and we can't, we would have to go out for a lot.
And will the radio frequencies at the church affect our kids as much as above?
Well, in the 2012 test, those were considered, and that was the adjacent property.
But if you're going sideways, we're, you're more likely to get sideways radiation from the church than coming to the top.
If they were put more antennas? I don't know.
Part of it may be that we are not the right people to answer those questions, right? I don't know, so, and maybe we wanna find some folks who are, like, people who can answer those questions.
And the same thing on the medical piece, because, um, you know, these studies, there's also starting to be emerging studies about wireless. So, you know, we could go down a route, we think we have to be looking, measure all these things as fair, and, you know, we'll balance it.
I think it's just, we could reach out to the town, the people already expressing concern, and learn as much as we can until we.
Yeah, and I think we need to, we need to tell legally what we're gonna be forced to do if we don't do it. That's the question.
Because from a simple contract perspective, you know, it's a no-brainer, but if there is, um, some operation.
Which is what we're being told, so, you know, I just wanna.
What is the timetable, or what are we to do to make a decision?
Well, 2020, you have thirty days to.
Thirty days prior to that?
Prior to July thirty-first, twenty twenty.
I just thought that, you know, given some of the concerns that have been expressed that we wanted to bring to your attention, that there is a timeline, and make sure we have ample time to consider the issues.
Thanks, thanks.
Great, okay, uh, J-Term, I'm gonna put a funny photo up here, there we go. So next week is J-Term, finally, we've been talking about it for two and a half years, I can't wait. I will be out in the field.
How many school committee members do you need in hiking?
I'm doing carpentry class.
Are you in a carpentry?
I actually do.
We're just super excited about it, or at least I certainly am. And, um, you know, the, the enthusiasm from students is really exciting. So I put up here, just as an example, one of the, um, very popular courses is the Summit New England Peaks, where they are going to be climbing mountains all five days, they're, go on hiking on Monday and Tuesday, day trips, and then they are hiking Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, camping out on Wednesday and Thursday nights. And here they are, just a few days ago, they brought in their camping equipment, and everybody was making sure they know how to pitch their tent, which seems like an important skill, uh, for this particular class. So we are off and running, and, um, you know, provided in your package, just in case you're interested, the descriptions of the thirty-six courses that are, are offered. It, it was wonderful, one of our goals for J-Term was to make sure that kids got to choose something with lots of information about their, their choice, and to find something that they're really excited about. So I provided some statistics there, of the seven hundred and fifty students who are going to be participating. Fifty-eight percent of them got their first choice, eighty-nine percent got one of their top two choices, and ninety-seven percent received their top three choices. So we felt good about that, and I should have brought, I didn't think that, um, the pie chart. What is great about this pie chart, when you look at the course choices, is it's like a rainbow. And what it says to us is, we've accomplished our goal of something for everyone, you know? It wasn't like everybody wanted this, it was, there was a wide array. So we're excited, there has been just a tremendous amount of logistics to figure out, as you can imagine, with thirty-six brand-new courses being launched. And each day, probably, you know, like, eight or nine field trips going out every day for five days in a row. We've had a steering committee of, um, teachers working on it, who have just been fantastic, Jonas Scher, who is our district PD coordinator. I, I'm joking, but I think the J-Term, the J actually stands for Jonas, since it's pretty much his program at this point. So we have been working with Westwood Media Center, they're gonna be documenting J-Term next week, they're gonna be here with cameras, they're also lending us some cameras to send out into the field with different courses, and they're gonna be putting together a video. We also have an Instagram account, Westwood J-Term, and so if you'd like to follow us in real time, we will be, um, sending out images. And for our last half-day, due to somebody's snow day calls, somebody, we have our last day of school on the Monday, June twenty-fifth, a half-day, not ideal. And, but what we're gonna be doing is using that day at the high school to sort of, um, debrief on the J-Term experience, get, we've got all these interesting ways to get feedback from kids about what happened, we're gonna watch the video together, we're gonna have some surprises to give out to students, don't wanna ruin the surprise, um, but I'm hoping it'll be a nice sort of call me.
So you'll actually get the kids to show up?
That is the hope, that is the hope, so, we'll see. And along those lines, you know, I think that one, um, you know, free-floating fear that people have when we first started talking about this was, well, you know, will kids come back after exams for something that takes place the last week of school? And I, of course, of course they will, and, um, I'm happy to say that at this point, we, in, out of seven hundred and fifty kids, only have about fifteen who we've communicated with who, for one reason or another, their families are leaving on vacation or something. And that is actually, historically, way fewer kids than we used to have requesting early departures when we had final exams. So I think it's, we'll build it, they will come up and see.
I just wanted, I had, I had the opportunity, I met, uh, about six planning people, it was the officials who committed the person. The only complaints I heard was the seniors who left wished they could go back to do these courses, and the parents wanted to take it, they didn't want the kids. So, uh, the professional, uh, well, professional process, you know, every little detail to, you know, how do you get reimbursed, is very preparative. Teachers, the whole faculty took this on as a new project, no new pay, it was unbelievable commitment, innovative and creative projects. And I don't think any public school has ever attempted anything like this to enhance the education opportunities. Some prep schools have done it with a lot of money, but, uh, I think it's a very impressive project with the administrative staff supporting and the teachers themselves.
Emily's brain shot, so, thank you.
It was a.
What are you doing, Chris?
Um, I'm actually one of the fifteen. I'm gonna be a voice.
Well, you'll be a voice, okay, that is a good pursuit, so, next.
It's similar to my, I actually got a democracy, which is, uh, it's like a submit, it's very similar.
Okay, well, then, voice state will be right up your alley, you can't do democracy, so, that's great, all right. And then I did just provide in your pack a, um, a little information about the SIT program, the Senior Independent Project Program. Thought you might be interested to see what kinds of projects our seniors worked on this year. And, um, as you can see, it's a diverse list of, um, projects, everything from sports management to, uh, video game design, to, um, uh, you know, women empowerment from small business ownership. So it runs quite, um, quite a range, and it continues to be a wonderful program. And we just wanna, um, thank all of the community members who serve as mentors for our, for our students as they, they work through those projects.
How many are projected for next year?
Um, you know, I don't know, I don't, do you know how many are projected for next year?
Um, I think it's sixteen to eighteen.
Sixteen to eighteen.
It's one section.
One section, okay, great. I, a couple of things I wanna mention, so we have decided that we are moving our STAR program, which is one of our specialized programs at the elementary level. It's currently housed at the Downey Elementary School, and we're gonna be moving it to the Sheen Elementary School. We made that decision for a whole host of reasons, Abby and I have been talking with principals and student services folks who are, I mean, probably.
Really.
Yeah, the fall, um, about this, and we've decided the time is right, but, you know, as you know, we have some specialized programs that serve all five of our elementary schools, no one program is large enough to replicate in multiple schools. And, um, for whatever reason, sort of historically, many of our specialized programs have been housed at Downey Elementary School. The number of programs and the size of them has just grown over time, as you know from the budget process, we're, um, splitting lava next year, so sort of creating another classroom, and, um, so based on a variety of conversations, we thought. And so based on a variety of conversations, we thought we should consider moving it on to another location. And so Sheehan is going there, and we've communicated, obviously with faculty and staff, and we've communicated with all impacted families. K-5. So that is happening. I will just point people to the Westwood Media Center website if you'd like to see a nice video about our third grade program at the Fisher School that Mr. Donovan organized. It features Joan in period costume. So take a look at that.
All over Facebook.
I cannot believe that.
It's a wonderful program, though. I was there in period costume myself one day. And, I don't know about that. But so our kids get to spend a day in the mid-19th century, and it's a wonderful experience. They love it. And we're looking at the Western Media Center and capture that.
Abby was in costume.
I did hear, I did hear one thing about this, though, Charlie. I heard that everyone was in costume, except for you.
He had suspenders on.
I had suspenders.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure.
It looked like I was a couple hundred years old, too. They said to me, did you know George Washington? Sean was there, giving him tips on baseball in 1868. I'm impressed with that, but I want to thank the staff.
I wasn't, no.
Oh, maybe it was Sean that wasn't in.
And also the janitor staff that actually carried, you know, 30 desks up from the basement and down. It was a very big process for everybody, the school system. They had 24 volunteers. Mr. Gillette was using a quill pen. He was practicing up his skills on a quill pen. So it was a nice group of hickie, two or three of his own. It was a nice group of people. But thank you all for volunteering to help.
And just the last item is Mr. Bevan, we are just wrapping up another cohort taking the Dale Carnegie training, correct?
Yep, we are.
Lots of other people are interested.
Yep, we are wrapping up, we wrapped up another cohort. We ran one last year. We did, we did a cohort in this spring, and we had, I think, 20 enrollees, and we had like a graduation ceremony, and we're having another cohort into July.
Well, these people out there in the media center, it's a wonderful opportunity.
Yes.
There's no public high school where kids have a chance to take a deal accounting course. This is what you do if you graduate from college, and you're going to go work for Microsoft or somebody. And Wayne Buffett said it's the most important year of his life. It's better than his Columbia MBA, that course. And the co-host puts all of his engineers through this program when he went to Chrysler. So it's right here in Westwood. It's an unbelievable opportunity. And I think they're still looking for people. Some of them might want to do it. But for a high school student to take the 24-hour deal accounting course, it's a huge opportunity. Thank you, Sean, for bringing it to us.
Yeah, we've had kids from each, each of the four grades participate, each of the two cohorts so far. And we'll see how July feels, and we're excited about it. It's been a great opportunity. Thank you, Charlie, for bringing it to us.
Well, thank you very much, everybody, for a very comprehensive report. This is the time of a meeting where we open up a meeting for public participation. Anybody have any comments, observations, or questions? We welcome you to come forward and just identify yourself and your address. And please step forward if you have anything to say. Yes.
Do I stand up for this?
Yes, please stand up if you say your address.
Hi, I'm Hannah Gardner, and I live in Nine Highview Street. And I just wanted to respond to a few of the comments that were made about the discussion about the cell phone tower. So first of all, you mentioned that it's well within the safety limits. Those safety limits refer to thermal effects. So basically, it keeps us from going to school inside of a microwave. So I think it's, it's pretty obvious that that school's not a microwave. Our bodies are not, are not heated up. Those safety limits do not have to do with non-thermal effects like cancer, cognitive effects, behavioral effects, immunotoxicity, all of the things that are the hot topics right now. So that needs to be really, really clear. Yes, they are well within federal regulations. It's not a microwave. Those safety effects do not protect our kids. So that was my first point. So I read the whole report that was, that was provided by an independent contractor, I think in 2010. And they sort of acknowledged that the levels were higher in front of the school. And they sort of, it's been about a year since I looked at it, but they seem to blame the big TV towers in Needham, which is simply ludicrous. Because I measured all over Westwood. Like, I took my acoustimeter, I measured all over Westwood. The levels of radio frequency radiation are really, really high in front of the, in the parking lot in front of the middle school. Much higher than they would be if I was making a phone call and had it next to my head. They are essentially nonexistent in front of the Sheehan School, which isn't that, that farther of a distance from the Needham Towers. And they are very, very low in front of Starbucks, which is really, really nearby, and has a big Wi-Fi, you know, Wi-Fi router going all the time. So blaming them on the Needham TV towers is simply crazy. So in terms of others, someone brought up other towns that have dealt with this. Dover, I think in the past year, made the decision not to put a tower on their middle school. Ashland made a similar decision. Ashland probably has the strictest radio frequency radiation regulations in the entire country. They have an expert there who said she would be happy to come talk to you guys anytime. And I believe Worcester School System recently has, has brought up this issue. I know LA County has said, you know, nowhere near our schools. So there's a precedent across Massachusetts and across the country of many school systems fighting this. So in terms of federal, someone brought up federal laws. Those federal laws, I assume, also refer to these FCC regulations about thermal effects. So it was also brought up the adjacent tower that's at the church with the two, the two preschools that are right there as well. And I measured sort of, sort of how far away that tower was emanating sort of levels of concern. And I'll be honest, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be ideal, in my opinion, to have a tower that close to our middle school and our high school. But would I send my kids to, to our middle school if that tower existed, but the tower on top of it didn't? And I would say yes, but if the tower on top of there is still there in three years, I'm moving. I, I don't know how many other people in Westwood will be moving. And I say three years because that's when my child would be going there. You brought up the World Health Organization. They currently classify it as a Class 2B possible human carcinogen, based on the evidence. There has been a lot of new evidence that has come out, that's come out over the past year that has made scientists basically say, you know, we might want to bump it up to a Class 2A probable human carcinogen. There's been a lot of research focused at the National Toxicology Program over the past year, which has shown brain and heart tumors in rice and mat. Rice and rat exposed. And then the institute in Italy, which is sort of similar to our NTP, did a big analysis using animal models, looking more specifically at the effect of a nearby radio, a cell phone tower. And they basically also saw heart tumors and brain tumors. And, yeah, so like, it was brought up sort of where else to put it. And my suggestion, by the way, I'm a neuroepidemiologist. I work at a medical school. My suggestion would not be to have it on school property. When I tested all around town, I really started seeing elevations. So I drove down 109 to sort of, to see where I started seeing elevations. And I'd have to get out of, get out of my car because the Bluetooth in my car was sort of messing it all up. But around the Tobin School, I basically wasn't really seeing any effects. And then as I got closer, sort of there's like that Greenway area. By the time I got to that Greenway area, I started seeing some, some effects. The general sort of recommendations that, that I throw out there, and I've seen other people throw out there, is about a quarter of a mile. But like I said, if that, if the tower on the church was still there when my kids went to school, I would let them go to that, go to the middle school. That's just sort of my own feeling.
What about, what about the police?
About the what? Yeah, there are two. I certainly would. That is why I didn't send my kids to those preschools. Because there is, right on their, their playground, a huge tower as well. You know, in terms of where, where to put it, a lot of towns have, have put them on police stations and fire stations so that they continue to get the revenue, but kids aren't affected. My understanding is that our fire stations all have them. And I know that a lot of firefighters' unions are really fighting back about this. I believe it's the San Francisco Firefighters Unions that are really fighting this and saying, we don't want it on our fire stations. It's impacting our ability to do our job. So, and then another point that was brought up was, well, we've got Wi-Fi routers, and we have laptops in the schools and cell phones. And I think as a school committee, you really have to think about the risks and benefits from an educational standpoint. The kids are not getting any educational benefit by the cell phone tower on top of the middle school. But there is educational benefits to these laptops and to a lot of the other technologies. And we want our kids' bodies to be able to handle that technology without the added effect of more radio frequency radiation from the cell phone tower.
Thank you very much for your input, and hopefully we'll continue to hear from you. And I think if we haven't followed up on all of this, we definitely will. But thank you for coming and talking to us. Any other comments, or if you'd like to say anything? Well, thank you very much.
I would.
Mine's a different subject, so.
Mine is as well.
Oh, great, okay.
Hi, I'm Caitlin, 10 Cedar Hill Drive. I don't know if it's an appropriate time to, to just give my thoughts on student travel. Is this appropriate?
Great.
I have a sophomore and a seventh grader, and my sophomore is very interested in going on the trip, the trip to China, possibly coming up this year. And we hosted two students from China in the recent program, and it was really wonderful. My sophomore is not a Mandarin student, and, but has a terrific interest in language. So that was really wonderful. And also my seventh grader developed an interest in Mandarin because we had these students come and stay with us. It was just a wonderful experience. So I would really love the opportunity to send my sophomore to China. Not just to have a week without her, but also because it's good for her. But also, she is a French student, and she would love to take the trip to France. But they're the same week. So that is my only criticism of the idea of sending our students for these trips next year is that if we could in future years make them different weeks, that would be really great. And if we could do them every year so that my seventh grader has a chance to make a great choice as well, it would be great. So, and I did just want to say, while I could, Mr. Hilton and Miss Fallen just did such a great job with the host families for the China, China exchange. It was very exciting, which I didn't really, you know, I didn't really expect the enthusiasm from the students and from the host families. And so I'm very grateful to them for that. And I hope for the same experience with the French students. We're going to host kids for that as well. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Lauren Denmark, 53 Highview Street, another Highview. Okay, so I'm going to read this. So as you know, the STAR program is starting at the Sheehan, which we found out yesterday. And I'm just a little concerned about this, and we actually have a good amount of Sheehan parents here. So as you know, we have lots of, it's a very, very large school, a very, very big population, especially the third grade. And then we also have the students that are bused in for Mr. McNabb's classes as well. So I have a student in the third grade and the first grade. So third grade has 24, 24, and 23 in terms of class sizes. And I just wanted to know if we're getting more students for this program that are coming into the third grade. The first grade, where my son is, is a very small group of students. However, it's been a very, very challenging year for the first grade. So in his class, there's been several distractions from learning. And one student has cornered other students in the class, punched them, kissed them inappropriately. And the teacher really wanted to have an aide for this student and couldn't get a full-time aide. So my concern is, is for the STAR program. Are the teachers going to be trained in this program? Are there going to be full-time aides for these students in the classroom? Because I want to make sure that my children are able to learn and have, you know, teachers that are trained in this and that are able to work with students at the same time. So that's mine.
I would just say thank you for your concern. And I think, as evidenced over the years at the Downey School, specialty programming is part of the culture and fabric of a building. And so those kind of things are handled thoughtfully and appropriately. And so I, I'm quite confident that the specific things you're talking about are already on the table for discussion with administrators, teachers, aides, clinical people, all of that. And I feel really good about the infusion of support that will come to the Sheehan School community for everybody. And I'd be happy to, you know, work on that over the summer and keep people posted.
Because I know that it's, it's been a difficult year at the Sheehan, and in terms of the support for teachers. And so I just, I want to make sure that teachers are happy, that the students are able to learn as best as they can without as many distractions as possible. I want them to be able to feel supported.
Yep, that's a shared goal, so thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on something, Melissa McDonough, Tewi Burgess. One question that wasn't responded to, though, is she asked if there's going to be, what the increase in student population would be at the Sheehan, how that would affect in particular class size. So not adding an aide in, but the volume and the number of students in each particular class, where we're already at 24, which is, I believe, on the higher end of the students' population across the elementary schools, at least in particular in third grade. So focusing on that grade, if we're adding in students to that grade, even adding in two students, you're already getting, it's, it's too high.
We'd love to be enrollment for next year, including all kinds of things that we know. So the students, specific students who are going to Sheehan, people we know who are going to other, exiting to go to other programs, et cetera, et cetera. And all of the classes are still within the, the school committee class size guideline at this point. And actually, the grade that you mentioned, I think it actually is going to be lower than what you just said, but I.
Third grade?
Yeah. I had done that in a laugh, third going into fourth. Yeah, we're all talking about the same thing. And, you know, I'm doing this from memory right now, but everything is still within class size guideline at this point, even with these changes.
What is the class size guideline?
For grades four and five, it's 18 to 24.
Any, any other comment? Also, we do follow this during the summer. Things change. But thank you for coming out and letting us know your concerns, and hopefully we'll keep following it. Any, any other comments or thoughts? Okay, we'll move on. The superintendent's evaluation. We would like to pass to Chairman of the Board, who has taken the lead.
So it's an interesting process. Because everyone else in the world typically has their evaluation behind their super boss, right? And you are fortunate enough to have your evaluation. So it's, it's an interesting process, I'm going to say that. And we are required by law, unfortunately, to do it this way. This is an evaluation process, as you all know, that's mandated by the state. But what they provide to us is an extensive, very extensive guideline. So we use it just as a guideline. It's part of the process. Superintendent Parks was required to revise the self-evaluation that she did. And the culmination of the process is this summative evaluation report. So typically, too, when you go for an evaluation in the, in the real world, you know, your evaluator doesn't read it to you. But I am going to read for evaluation. Prior to this, I requested input from any of the prior school, school committee members, including Brian Hill. including Brian Hill. So, I'm gonna quickly run through these. First amendment, I think that we could do is, if I have additional comments. Okay, so I'm gonna run through this right here quickly. So, as I said, this is the performance review and end-of-cycle summit of evaluation report assessing your accomplishments toward attainment of the district's goals and your performance against the standards and goals, the district goals for those that you established. So, the first professional practice goal is developing skills in strategy development, data analysis, and instructional leadership by completing the first year of the new superintendent induction program. Superintendent Parks, I'm gonna refer to you as superintendent, not necessarily, I'm just gonna be. Superintendent Parks worked closely throughout the year with retired superintendent Erwin Blumer. As part of this work, she published an entry plan, conducted a systematic entry process, and recently published the entry findings. She will continue with this program next year with additional coursework and coaching and will present her progress to the school committee again next year. We are giving you a rating on this practice goal, which was fulfilled by your work with Mr. Blumer, as proficient. The second student learning goal, advanced progress in narrowing the gap between general ed students and special ed students by five percent in science, technology, and engineering as measured by state assessments. Superintendent Parks made significant progress toward this goal. Under her leadership, the middle school science coordinator worked with the administration to align the curriculum at the middle school with the new science standards. This coordinator provided valuable instructional coaching to middle school science teachers as the new curriculum was being developed. With the help of the elementary science coordinator, the school district has successfully completed year two of the three-year implementation of STEM scopes. Across the district, the curriculum is not only better aligned in terms of state standards, but also better aligned between elementary, middle, and high school levels so as to provide a more cohesive science program. Although we don't yet know whether we achieved or whether you and your administration achieved the five percent progress toward this goal, we still believe that this deserves a rating of proficient. Number three, district improvement goals. There are two goals to be evaluated. The first, engage the community around the current status of our building, our school buildings, with a focus on educational needs in order to develop a set of priorities to guide capital improvement planning. The superintendent did an excellent job engaging and educating the community and families in the MSBA process. Through her work and communication with the community regarding district elementary school needs, we were able to secure a successful vote at the May thirtieth town meeting to proceed to the next steps in the MSBA process of disability study. We're giving you a rating here of exemplary. You really did a tremendous job here. And all of you have read, I'm sure, all the extensive pages of guidelines. But in particular, when they talk about the ratings, exemplary is really off the charts. That is, you are a model for other states, the nation, and we are the world.
So far, this has been great for myself. I appreciate that, I do.
Okay. So, the second goal and district improvement goals. The second one is developing and supporting practices that acknowledge the diverse backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges of students. To achieve this goal, the superintendent focused on providing teachers with strategies for supporting diverse students. Some examples include professional development series on early release days for elementary teachers about supporting the mental health of young children. Workshop for thirsty teachers from the DESI Safe Schools Initiative about supporting LGBTQ students. Workshop for thirsty teachers from the Anti-Defamation League staff to support students in the World of Difference Program. Multiple workshop offers at the Full Day Professional Development Day in November about supporting transgender students, embracing family diversity, and fostering community in diverse schools. Some are professional development courses as well, supporting social and emotional learning. Through these professional development classes that you fostered and encouraged, and hearing from the teachers, I'm sorry, through the professional development classes and hearing from the teachers, you, the superintendent, determined that there is a need to add social-emotional learning to the curriculum reviewing. Your rating here is proficient. Now, we also, in addition to the goals, we are instructed to review standards. And I'm gonna go through four of the standards. The first is instructional leadership. The interesting part about this is, I did this several years ago, remember? And hopefully, this is clear to everybody here, but when I did it many years ago when we first got these guidelines, it was so convoluted. No one knew what I was saying, but everybody just kept nodding their heads. I'm hoping that what I'm saying is clear right now. It's an interesting, again, document that the state provides, but I'm gonna refrain from making comments around that. All right, so standards first, instructional leadership. We looked at progress that was made for the science curriculum and the diversity and SEL curriculum review, and we give you a rating of proficient. Second standard, management and operations. This was your superintendent's first year leading the budget process. The superintendent engaged the school committee and the district leadership team early, beginning in November, and meaningfully. The superintendent promoted meaningful budget discussion at school committee meetings. We worked together to develop priorities. One discussion involved user fees, and the end result was a phasing out of kindergarten tuition. The superintendent also addressed concerns from the community about class size. She spoke to each member of the school committee individually and was able to come up with a plan which satisfied the needs of different elementary schools and the school committee. We, as a school committee, articulated a desire for a transparent process with more frequent input from the members, and we got that. Rating, proficient. Standard three, family and community engagement. Superintendent demonstrated that she is both a strong and effective advocate of the schools as well as a team player. Right out of the blocks, the superintendent reached out to several town officials, department heads, and town administrators to discuss with them their perception of the relationship between the school department and the town. She met monthly with the budget steering committee and the town administrator, allowing the two of them to stay in communication. She attended by the meetings of the town's executive function group, which included the town administrator, financial director, HR director, D W director, R G, everybody basically, and even the econ development and director of youth and family services. She attended UTO meetings, athletics, scholastic, theater events, et cetera, throughout the year. She was very visible and she was engaged. She engaged community members and community leaders alike. Rating, exemplary. Professional culture is the final standard that I'll talk about. So, this was continuing to strengthen the admin council, frequent, yes. Continuing to strengthen admin council, frequent individual coaching of the principals around their leadership and their work with teachers. Those are two things. The superintendent's professionalism is evident in her communication. Emily says exactly what she means. She's incredibly articulate and transparent. Rating, proficient. So, those are, that's the evaluation of your goals and standards. And I would say we can perhaps take your floor if anyone has comments.
I just want to thank you all for having me here, just to thank you all. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, I think it was a great year. I thought your self-assessment, as I mentioned, was, I thought, excellent. I think the, I'd like to see the budget process replicated in other processes, e.g., goals. It'd be good to get early involvement in this committee ahead of getting one in September. I mean, it's too late now, but I think that should be a good example. But I think how I'd like to engage you guys on the floor.
And I just want to add that working with you during your first year, you were, it's hard to believe it was your first year as a superintendent. I know you've been in the district. You did a fantastic job, and I really enjoyed working with you. And I know Charlie said earlier, you know, thanks for all your hard work. You make it easy, so I appreciate it, and I really enjoy it.
Good job. Keep up the good work.
Everything you said is well deserved. I've been very impressed with the issue that came up. We get the best MCA's anyplace. There's a subtle little thing in there that our kids with disabilities weren't doing it well in science. That's the only thing. And you've got right hands. You figured it out. And it's amazing what you focused on, dealing with one of the few weaknesses we have. The second thing is the whole issue of bringing science to the elementary schools. It's just, it's fantastic what these kids are gonna be able to do with the commitment and encouraging the elementary school teachers to teach science is a real challenge. But I think that, the process you used, the only thing I'd suggest is you might want to run for governor, to get the community organized for this vote. I mean, the meetings you went to, the people you engaged with.
Yeah, yeah. We'd like to keep her alive.
Well, you know.
I think there's no danger.
But it was a wonderful campaign to teach it to everyone. And then finally, I think, you know, the work you've done with the town officials, who have always had a kind of a relationship with, had been tense. And I think you've really kept them so respectful of you and what you've been doing. And I think, and that just took a ton of hours and all the night meetings you've been at. So, it's a tremendous job. I think you can, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that feedback, I really do. And I would just say that I feel so fortunate to be in this district and to work with such an unbelievable team. And I want to thank the school committee because, you know, this year has not been without its challenges. And it's been wonderful to work with you, and I feel incredibly supported in this role. And I know from some of my colleagues that my experience is not universal. So, I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Our next item is the college admissions update. Lamaska, thank you.
All's fine. I downloaded it, so.
Sure.
And I think I gave you some clicker without looking at the timeline, so. Except I do not have any of these papers, so I will be clicking forward.
Okay, give me the notch.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you everyone. I always enjoy coming and speaking to school committee and giving you an update on how the class of 2018 fared and some other additional information. So, let me go ahead and take a look at that. So, for the class of 2018, we had two hundred and forty-nine graduates this year, forty-six male and fifty-four female students. For their post-high school plans, we have ninety-six percent continuing their education. Ninety-four percent of those will be attending a four-year college. Two percent will be going to two-year colleges. And then four percent of our students are choosing to do other things. We have students going to PG or prep school years, gap year, career education, or directly into full-time. So, last year, when I presented on the class of 2017, Tony had asked for some context. How did that compare to previous years, which was a great question? So, I threw this graph up here to give you a ten-year look back, actually nine years, of how we have done in terms of post-secondary planning. And you can see that on average, over these years going back to 2008, we sent about ninety-six percent of our students onto college. And the average four-year attendance rate is ninety-four percent. The average rate of students who go to two-year colleges, two percent. And then four percent of the classes do other things, such as the gap year, employment, career, education, et cetera. On taking a look at our early action and early decision, applicants this year, seventy-one percent of the class applied early. And the ED, early decision applicants, we had a sixty-seven percent acceptance rate. And then ninety percent of our early action applicants were accepted.
What are the differences between early decision and early?
So, early action is a non-binding commitment. So, students apply early, adhere early, they're allowed to apply to other schools, get regular decisions back, and then they can make a decision in the spring where they want to attend. Early decision, they apply early, but it's a binding commitment. So, if a student is accepted to a college early decision, they must attend.
Can you only apply to one early decision?
You can apply to one early decision school, you can apply to early action schools. But only one ED because you're basically signing a contract to that college if you're accepted. So, it's a big decision for students. And over the past five years, you can see we parved around seventy-one, seventy-two percent of our students that have applied early action or early decision over the past five years. And then in terms of acceptance rates over the past five years, we've averaged eighty-nine percent for early action and seventy-three percent for early decision. So, this past year, ninety percent of our students were accepted early action. And then for the class of 2018, breakdown public versus private schools, we're gonna have forty-two percent attending public colleges and fifty-eight percent going to private schools. And as usual, the largest number of students going to one college is University of Massachusetts at NMS, so this year, we have twenty students attending UMass. Fifty-five percent of the class applied and fifty-seven percent were accepted. This year, ten of the students who are attending have received the Adams or Copplik tuition scholarships. And those are based on their in-past scores in tenth grade for Adams solely. And then Copplik scholars have to also provide additional tests on AP schools or SAT subject tests. And just in taking a five-year look back at UMass statistics, so these graphs I'm putting up here are from our Navinons program. And so, when you look at the class of 2014, for example, you can see the green squares are students that were accepted, red X's were students that were denied, those waitlisted students as well. And in 2014, the average GPA for students accepted to the University of Massachusetts at NMS was three seven eight with a thirteen forty-four SAT score. And that has gone up. So, this year, the average was a three nine six GPA with a thirteen fifty-six SAT. So, we have seen the University of Massachusetts at NMS become increasingly more competitive in the years. Okay, and for other Massachusetts State universities, we had a fair number of students. There were seven students going to UMass Lowell, which is really getting a terrific reputation for their STEM programs. We have students going up there and studying computer science. That's Nick Fuzco, who's gonna study biomedical engineering at UMass Lowell. UMass Boston, we have five students attending, which is pretty high for us. You can live on campus at UMass Boston for the first time, which is pretty exciting. So, I think we're gonna see those numbers continue to increase. They have built models there. That's Harry Linehan, he's gonna be studying chemistry. And then we have three students going to University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth. And that's Nate DeSantis, who's gonna be studying business. The other Massachusetts State colleges, we have two students going to Westfield and Frampton State. We have three going to Bridgewater State University. That's Will Danforth, who's in the honors program at Bridgewater, studying psychology. And for Mass Maritime, we have two students going, that's James Curtin, who's gonna study emergency management. And then we have quite a number, a fair number of students who attend the public colleges in New England. And UNH is always a popular choice for our students. We have thirteen members of class of 2018 going this year. That's Peyton Jackman, she's going and decided to UNH. Three to URI, two to University of Maine. We have five students going to UVM this year. And that's Sarah Lawson, who will be doing the honors program studying environmental science. Other state public colleges outside of the New England area, we have two students going to University of Maryland, two students going to Rutgers, and then individual students going to those other schools. That's CJ Adorian, going to Wisconsin Madison, will study journalism. Elizabeth Hood is going to College of Charleston, will study business. Tim Kearns at University of Maryland for journalism. And at the D U University, that was Justin Anderson, who's gonna study environmental science. For private colleges in New England, where we send quite a large number of our students, this year, we're gonna be sending nine students to Boston College, eight students to Northeastern University, six students to Providence, six to Wentworth, which is another school that we've seen on the increase, again, in large part due to their STEM programs. We're gonna have four go to Suffolk, three to Fairfield. We're going to have four go to Suffolk, three to Fairfield, three to Quinnipiac, three to Colby, three to Curry, two to Clark, two to Brown, two to Bates, and two to Annecot. Those pictures up there in the top right corner, that is Zane Arquette, he's going to Bates, and he's going to study geology. And he's going to play the euphemium, but I don't know if they're. On the left side, that's Hannah Blonder, going to Wellesley. She's actually going to play golf there, study economics. And down in the bottom row, that's Caroline Kramer. She is going to study biology at Harvard. Caroline Kramer is one of our four delegates during the class of 2018. And then for private colleges outside of New England, we have four students going to Syracuse, three going to Cornell, two, three to George Washington, two to Elon, two to Xavier, and two to University of Miami, two to Dayton, and two to Villanova. On the top of the corner, Chris Erickson is going to Marist, and he is actually going to spend his freshman year in Italy. They've had that program in place for 30 years at Marist, and so he's very excited about that. His family has already booked their triple offer for Christmas. For University of Miami, that's Katie Faris, she's going to study finance. And then the future of the two girls on the left is Evan Hazard, who's going to study neuroscience at Tulane University. And Tess Healy is going to study biology at Dayton. Lower left corner, that's Molly Curly, she's going to study engineering at the University of Southern California. She just went through her orientation last week. And in the bottom right corner for Cornell University, we have three students going there. That is John Rogers, and he's going to study agricultural science and business management. And we have four students going to Canada this year, one to University, and three to Every year, we poll our students and ask them a bit about their experience with the college application process, how we can improve that process in the guidance office. And then this year, we also asked them what the important factors were for choosing a college. And 76% of the students identified that fit with the vibe of the campus, which is not surprising to us. And one of the reasons we really push that they do college visits, to get that feel when they're on campus, that was followed by location or distance from home, size, major program, affordability, and internship opportunities. And this year, for the first time, at Emily Chant's request, we collected students' emails, outside of their Western emails, so we can reach out to students in the future. So we've been asking that every year, students when they graduate. Some questions about AP coursework and credit. So in looking at the class of 2017 data, that's the most recently we have. Schools do not come out until July for AP exams. So last year, 29% of our students took AP courses. And of those, 91% received a score of three or higher. When asked if all of our students take the AP exam in the course that they're taking, the number is pretty close to 100%. The language we use in our program of studies is that students are expected to take the AP exam if they agree with us. Every year, we have a couple. It's really not more than one, two, or three who choose not to take it, but we're close to 100% of the students who actually take the exam in the course. And this is a five-year look back report by the College Board. And you can see that we're hovering around 90% or so for Westwood High School, that purple bar, compared to the Massachusetts average of about 71 students that scored three or higher percentage-wise. And then the global average is around 61%, students scoring three or higher.
Good question on the APs. I'm hearing anecdotally that, I mean, back in the day, when I went to school, a lot of kids got credit and then they would graduate early. But what I'm hearing is that most schools no longer, they'll give you credit for the course, but you just move to another course. So you don't, you can't necessarily save money that way. And really, the AP, the focus is, the universities or colleges want to see, they look at the APs in terms of high school rigor and ensuring that you have, is that, am I?
Yep, if you, two slides, I'll address that. Yeah, no problem. That's great. And then this is just some data as well about how many students took APs over the past five years up to 2017. So we had 301 students last year take 612 exams. And you can see from 2013, when we had 221 students, up to 301 in 2017, that the number of students taking APs has gone up, and the number of exams that they've taken has gone up from 384 to 612. And that's in part to our growing population, more students taking APs, and more AP course offerings in the past three years. So we're seeing that difference there. And the second and third box is again, just numbers comparing us to Massachusetts globally.
Look, we get a copy of those on, I can't quite see it now.
Yeah, sure.
But that could be, the comparison with Massachusetts in the last one, you know, I think, my question would be of, all the kids that are taking them, how does that compare with other competitive towns? And how many kids take them? Are there any statistics like that?
Next slide, please. So I knew you were interested in that, Charlie. So this was not hard data to get. The Boston Magazine poll looks at all kinds of data for districts. And so I just looked at the top 50 schools, and I pulled out the tech towns, the towns that are belong to the education cooperative, just to give you a little bit of comparison. And again, the bar is students that received a score of three or higher who made the right town.
And just the raw number, what part of that, is it half the kids in that senior class are taking one? Are there any numbers like that?
That's harder to tease out because a lot of students take multiple APs, some only take one. So that would be...
What would be interesting is, you know, do we have a lot higher percentage of the class taking them versus other systems? I don't know if that's even possible, but it would be of interest to, you know, most of our kids, a large percentage take them versus other places.
We can get that.
I think that would be very interesting to check. How does that compare?
Okay. And then in terms of the college credit question, so it really does vary, what you're talking about, Carol, some students, colleges will give advanced standing, or you can test out of a class. But what we've seen over the years too, is just the bar getting higher. Some schools will accept a score of three, some want a higher score, four or five. And there are some colleges that don't take AP credit at all regardless of your score, even if you get a five. And that can vary by school, of course, and it can vary by subject. When you go on the college website, there's schools that take calculus BC, but they won't take calculus AB. They won't take psychology, but they'll take AP labor. So we really advise students, the best course of action is to go to the individual college website and look at their policies and whether or not they'll receive credit. But that has changed with the years, unfortunately for our students. But it certainly does help you to have that AP coursework on your transcript for those competitive colleges. And lastly, just while I'm here, I thought I'd give you a quick update on what we're doing in guidance. We have expanded a seminar program, which we're really excited about. We have always had the freshman seminar program in place, and we've partnered with the ITC coaches. And so it's part of the student's schedule in term one and term two, season three times. But I put in green programs that we've expanded over the past year. So sophomore seminars, we used to go and take time from the wellness teachers. We now have it built into the student's schedules. So they meet once a cycle, which is five times during a term. And we spend time on things like standardized tests and career interest inventory. But I also did want to mention that we've incorporated a new stress management session this year that was really successful and well-received by the students. And I know Abby's been talking to, the expert being implemented next year, and that's going to slide right into the sophomore seminars in 2019. Junior seminars, we used to take time out of the English classes, but again, that's been scheduled into students' term three schedule. So we saw them five times, which really allowed us to expand the topics and helping them prepare and filling out the comment application, talking about letters of recommendation, standardized tests, and college essays, developing their list. Senior seminars, we added one in term four this year. We've been talking about for many years trying to get the, what's called the second step SOS program. We do that program with all the ninth graders now, but we spent a program in place for a couple of years. It's geared for 12th graders heading off to college. And so we were able to offer that this year, between the guidance council and our social worker. And it was a great program. It really talked about how to access help with some of the stresses that you can face in college. So we did that. We talked about So Year In Now, which was our second year doing that, and talking about decisions to make when choosing a college. And then this year, we're going to add term one senior seminar, begins once a cycle, so we can just have more face time with the students and helping them finalize their list, fill out applications, essays, et cetera. And that's all in addition to individual meetings we have with students.
So what do you think, Chris? Sound good?
[laughing]
Sorry?
Any important news?
Yeah, I think, I was a junior this past year, I think a lot of us found the junior seminars really helpful in terms of setting up our time. I know a lot of kids had no idea where they wanted to apply. And I think taking the time to develop a list and sort of reading through each list and criteria, it was really helpful.
The emails that you're going to have would be really great to begin to, you know, ask for important ideas. But what subject did you find most helpful to you now? Things like that would be wonderful feedback. You know, we have a way to contact you.
Right. I mean, we took a stab at trying to do an alumni survey without that kind of email list. And so it was really trying to grow through social media and whatnot. And we got some responses, and it was interesting. But the effort that we worked at was clear that statistically speaking, we had not gotten an appropriate sample to be able to really make anything of the data. And so going forward, we want to be able to be systematic.
Questions?
Would you also use that data to help kids currently in school if they're thinking of a college and someone from last year went there? Is that another reason? I mean, that's, that's a really good use of those.
True. We do have, I mean, you might want to speak a little bit about Naviance because we do have an interesting way to tap into that now.
Yeah. So in terms of seeing what might be a good fit college for them, and helping them look.
Yeah, I found a rising senior, and I'm considering certain colleges. And I know, you know, you can say to me, oh, so-and-so went there, talk to them about it.
Yep, we do that now. Because we do have access to see what students are at what schools. And if they want to be in touch with them, our students are pretty good and eager to talk to students who are interested in their college. So that's kind of an informed process right now, but we do do that.
Okay.
This would work out much better during, like, school vacations, inviting kids to come in, and kids is hosting so-and-so, other colleges, people will be talking about who were graduate. Just to take advantage of the kids back in town, with kids who are interested in St. Joseph's or something, is that possible to do?
So we have had alumni in the past two years in this part of our So Year In Now what program to talk about their college experience, which has been very helpful to students. Yeah, two years now, we've had a panel of students present.
I think in the past, you sent a complete list?
Yes.
You can do that electronic, I mean, to me, I don't need paper anymore, but electronic.
Yeah. Yeah. So we are, we're actually still tweaking our final end of the year report that we'll give to. We just had kids come off the waitlist last year. So still making some adjustments. So that's still happening. Students can be on a waitlist at the end of June usually. But we'll get that to you by the end of the month. We'll have A to Z list of where our kids are going, how many students are going, and what colleges. This is just highlighting.
Do they get their money back from first school when they get up?
No, they do not. No, that's a risk. They take, yeah.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Steve. Thank you.
It's going to lock the, lock you off. Jack, are you going to this clip, or?
Oh. Come on, Steve.
I'll just give you a little signal.
All right.
All right. So the purpose of this update is really threefold. One is to kind of give a review of some of the benefits of the one-to-one initiative we've been in and out for five years. Related to that, I'd like to focus a little bit on responsive use for student surround technology. And then thirdly, I'd like to do a review of our recruiting initiative in grade three, which is ending this first year of implementation. So just as a point of reference, we did start the one-to-one initiative back in 2013, 14. As you can see, we have gradually phased in additional grades over time. And next year, we will be fully one-to-one in grades three through 12. The note on the side there, I think is important, an important note, that this is a take-home program for grades six through 12. And then in the elementary school, we have carts inside the classrooms that have a sufficient number for each student, and they're used when the teacher sees them. As far as reasons to go one-to-one or some of the benefits, this slide is actually one that I showed way back in 2012. Perhaps you remember it, Carol, you were on the task force with us. And we identified these nine reasons that we thought one-to-one would be beneficial. And I will say that they have stood the test of time, we've seen some real progress in many of these areas. And I'll touch on a few of them this evening. So for example, the shift from student-centered to, I'm sorry, teacher-centered to student-centered instruction. That goal or benefit that we observed is also related or kind of called out in our Guiding Principles for Instructional Technology. And that's a document that we've worked on for about a year and a half, and we published it just over a year ago. And if you look at the first sentence of the mission statement for the Guiding Principles, it talks about student-centered instruction being a goal. So I wanted to point this out because I think it's critical that the goals of the one-to-one program are also aligned with more or less our strategic part of our instructional goal as well. I'd like to talk about a very specific example that addresses student-centered learning and then talk in more general terms. So don't click yet. This is a, this is a picture of an application called Geogebra, which is web-based and is available for use on Chromebooks. And this is an activity that we've actually done with students in upper elementary, and it's also suitable for students in the middle school. And the goal of this activity is to have students essentially look at these shapes, which have a label attached to them, squares, rhombus, whatever, and reverse engineer them in an effort to determine the precise mathematical definition for these objects. This is a very difficult abstract task for young students. So we use this platform.
[laughing]
So we use this, we use this platform, you can go ahead and click. This is actually a video. And students manipulate these objects. And as they manipulate the objects, they are constructed in such a way that they preserve the qualities of the object. So for example, if you drag a rhombus, it will always be a rhombus. If you drag a quadrilateral, it'll always be, it'll even tell you if it's not a quadrant. And so it's a highly inductive approach, where students are very much working either with a partner or independently, and in taking this continuous feedback and using it to draw a conclusion and come up with a mathematical definition.
What age is this for?
So this is, we've actually done this exact activity with kids in fourth and fifth grade.
Oh, my God.
And yes, it's quite interesting. And actually, on the left-hand side, when you make a parallelogram look like a rectangle, that really blows their mind because now it's like, which one is which? And we call rectangles parallelograms, or vice versa. And that gives us a whole nother level of complexity. But it's, what I like about this activity is it's highly student-centered. And I think it's an application of technology that is really difficult to replicate using other methods. It's, I think it's, as I mentioned earlier, it's inquiry-based, it's highly inductive. And when students are participating in this kind of an activity, I believe, it certainly raises engagement levels, but it also increases depth of understanding, which leads to better retention rates. And eventually, I think it helps us, of course, progress is that they can make connections to new content. So that's a very specific example of the student-centered use of technology to engage learning. In more general terms, I would say that the shift that... In more general terms, I would say that the shift that I'm talking about could be likened to traditional instruction, which is really good since the beginning of time, where the teacher is kind of the possessor of knowledge, they curate information, we package it up and then it's delivered to students. And in contrast to contemporary instruction, students are asked a question, we use available resources to research, define, construct knowledge, such as the last example. The research is often in form of using the web or getting information that is simply accessible now that we have these devices. And I've kind of identified three benefits. I think there are many benefits, but these kind of come to the surface for me. I think this contemporary instruction model fosters student agency, independence, higher retention rates, promotes critical thinking and problem-solving skills. So I like the shift that this is going. I'm not here to say that we're all there yet. There's a lot of work to be done. But this, to me, gets at the core of why I believe student-centered instruction is so important. Moving on, other reasons, I want to highlight these two reasons because I think they're very closely related. We went one-to-one back in 2013. I would say that access by students to personal devices, particularly at the middle school, was more, and when I say personal devices, I mean like a smartphone, I would say would be more the exception rather than the norm. And now five years later, I think that that is foot, that is now more the norm and less the exception. And because of that, we've noticed that kids are excellent consumers of electronic media. I would say that they are, they know how to use technology for entertainment purposes. And we feel it's our responsibility to explicitly teach for students responsible use, using devices, particularly the ones that we provide them for productivity and organization, so that they are adept at using technology to enhance their education, so that they can compose a good email, so that they have a professional presence when they're using digital tools. So that's a real focus for us.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
I don't want to, but I know you have data on this around maybe the other side, kids doing video. I mean, how do we police?
So I'm getting it a little bit.
Okay, all right.
But if I don't answer your question, we're bad. So one of the ways we're addressing this concern, or what I think is a responsibility to provide responsible use instruction, and I would say that that term includes everything from internet safety education to encouraging students to form a positive digital footprint or profile, so to speak, and everything in between. So we have had, for many years now, direct explicit instruction about internet safety in grade two. And every student in the district gets that. Since 2014, the second year of implementation at the high school, we started the freshman seminar. I know that Lynn mentioned that for guidance. But our ITCs provide some really good instruction to our freshmen once a cycle around, again, responsible use, how to stay organized, how to best manage their digital lives, so to speak. In grade six, we have some instruction in health and wellness, or we're planning to expand that to X Block Advisory next year, kind of front-load that, do it more earlier in the year, because that's the first year where the students get the take-home devices and we feel like that's a critical year. And we're developing something in grade five as well. And I want to be really clear about this, that at these four points, every kid is getting instruction from, whether it's our ITCs or people from Health and Wellness, guiders or whatnot. But they also get reminders and instruction in between, but these are kind of formal checkpoints, so to speak, really to ensure that that happens. Another piece that we have found is critically important is the parent engagement side. So when we started one-to-one in Thurston, we implemented an orientation program for parents. They come in late August and we provide, it's a fairly quick orientation, but we've done a lot of things, including expectations, responsible use, things like that. So that's ongoing. We have hosted evening presentations and panel discussions with a hope that we'll continue to do that going forward. And then to answer your question, so we have a product that we use on the Chromebooks called Securely. It essentially filters the Chromebooks so that the kids are unable to access harmful content. The Chromebooks are filtered whether they're at school or off-campus. We're actually not required to filter off-campus, but I felt like it was important that the protection is on the Chromebooks at all times. But this year, the company Securely kind of rolled out this parent portal. And we tried it out with parents in grade six and seven. We had an opt-in period. And those parents that did opt-ins securely, they get two things. They get a weekly summary of their child's at-home browsing activity. So every Wednesday, every Wednesday, they'll get a report that kind of categorizes where the child has spent his or her time on the Chromebook, that is. And then secondly, they get access to the Securely portal. They can actually look at customer reports, but they can also manage restrictions at home. So they could say, block a category of sites, extreme media, in case maybe Spotify or Netflix is becoming a problem. They can actually go into a portal and do that themselves. They can also block specific sites. I mentioned Netflix. I've heard that that can be tied with search. Sometimes, you know, parents may choose to lock that one as well. So they have this real power to really manage what's happening at home. And I have some survey data that suggested that parents were quite pleased with this product. And here's one of the survey results, having had conversations with your child as a result of using this product. What I think is critical about this is that the filtering is a technical solution. It's good to have. I think it's critical that parents have conversations with their kids. And we're seeing that almost three-quarters of the parents that are using this product are indeed having those conversations. To follow up to that question, when they are having those conversations, they're indicating to me that they are helpful in establishing safer and more responsible user use. So there's additional survey data in your packet, but I've seen enough to know that I think the parents have blocked this product and I'm planning on rolling it out across the board in grade six and 12 next year. It was very well received. I want to show you a quote I received from a parent. I honestly think that this sums up every parent's thinking in the district right now about technology. And I just, I think it's a wonderful quote. I'm thrilled that this person feels that this tool is helpful. But it also tells me that parent engagement is something that we need to continue to do. I think parents are looking for help. They've made steps to do that. I think we need to continue to do that going forward. Can I answer a question?
Yeah. So, I think this is for the follow-up. So could a kid at the middle school do gaming during the school day?
So.
Right now?
The answer is no.
Okay.
But some creative kids have occasionally found ways to get a little bit around and get to some games.
Okay.
So we're working on it.
Okay.
So there is no perfect filter out.
I understand.
But, and this is where the education piece comes in.
Right.
And, you know, some kids, some kids will always try to kind of get there.
Okay.
And others kind of get it and then they adjust and adapt and figure it out.
Okay.
So the Securely thing, I mean, that's only for browsing. I mean, would that pick up on games?
Well, the Chromebooks are essentially a web browser. So anything that they're doing on a Chromebook will get those rules.
So I've heard anecdotally that kids are creating Google accounts outside of the school, logging into the Chromebooks and then accessing sites that they're not allowed, that won't get blocked by Securely. Is that being addressed?
I've heard anecdotally that same thing.
Right.
And yes, we are, it's very difficult because the evidence is capital escape. But to the extent possible, I think it's our responsibility to make it a little more difficult for kids to get to these sites so that they are less apt to be off-task. So I hear you clear. So we're working on this issue on two fronts. Again, the technical front, and I think that's important, but also the, this other side of talking to kids and engaging with parents and things like that. So it's really a multi-faceted approach that we're really taking.
I would add another facet for the kids, like the old-fashioned classroom behavior. Right. So off-task behavior is not a new idea. This is a particularly, you know, I don't know, one that people are highly motivated to engage in, maybe, right, gaming. But, you know, there are things that teachers can do to monitor what kids are doing during class. I think they still need to do that, even though there are technical solutions.
Teach from the back of the room, walk around, be in proximity with kids. So these are the, these are the same things that teachers have been doing for years. I've always said the best deterrent to off-task behavior is a good lesson and good instruction. So that's always been the case. The last thing I want to hit on, in terms of the whole one-to-one thing, is authentic learning experiences. And I honestly cannot think of a better example of this kind of experience in the third-grade coding special. So this is actually, I love this photo. This is a picture of students working at Deerfield School. They are building a Lego robot, very intentionally, I might add. And they will, eventually, after constructing a robot, they will code on the Chromebook and then using Bluetooth, they'll send the program down to the, to the robot and it can execute the program. So this has been fantastic program. It is, we're just about wrapping up the first year of implementation. If you want to go to the next slide, these are kind of the four main points I wanted to mention about the coding special. Every child in grade three attends it. Our ITCs have done great work. They stepped up and they are the ones that are teaching it. As I said a minute ago, it is absolutely authentic. It's student-centered. Just for clarification, coding is kind of synonymous with computer science, programming, and we do a lot with robotics as well. It's aligned with newly distributed NASA standards around digital literacy and computer science. Those actually were put out, I think, about, just about a year ago. They were finalized. I'd like to add here as well that in addition to the coding special, we have, we're in our second year, is that right, at the middle school with the computer science and engineering program for all grades. That has been a fantastic program. Coupled with that, we have elective courses at the high school. I would say that in the aggregate, when you look at the coding that's happening at Thurston and at the high school, we are implementing those standards, which, and I would say that we are pretty far ahead of the curve in terms of our neighboring towns, in terms of really embracing what I would call STEM and bringing it here to the Western schools. So it's a work in progress, but I think we've done a lot. I think we have more to go, but I'm very pleased with where we are at. You'll see in the last bullet, we are planning to do this again next year and make it better. And we will be evaluating options for other grades. So on the next slide, I have some parent survey data. I surveyed all third-grade parents in response to the parents saying, my child has a favorable opinion of the special. Well, three-quarters gave it the highest rating. When the parents indicated that they have a favorable opinion, that jumped to almost eighty-two percent. And then if they would support the expansion, that went up a little bit more to eighty-three percent. That's a, it's a good thing and a bad thing. The good thing is that they certainly embrace the program. Bad, I'm gonna call it bad, but the challenge is we're not sure quite yet how to expand our offerings. It's a challenge at the elementary school. There are specials. There's a lot of curriculum being done. I know I'm talking to both Emily and Allison about some creative ways to integrate this perhaps in some of the other subject areas. That'll be a focus of some of our discussions next year. Where do we go from here? I'll leave you with this last slide. In your packet, I have all the comments from parents, but I already picked five that I just thought were fun and interesting. So I'll just let you preview those. But that's really my update this year.
So I use Securely. I love it. And it's certainly sparked conversations in our house. And I think that's a really, really great program. The one area that as a, you know, my oldest child's sixth grade, so it's the first time we've gone through middle school. The one thing we had trouble with was the technology in terms of organizing his schoolwork. So, you know, there's my homework.
Yep.
Some teachers use it, some don't. There's Aspen. Some teachers use it, some don't. It was confusing at the beginning to understand the interplay between the two, which there isn't any, we figured out. And it was, it was just, I think the technology piece for a first-time parent was a little confusing. So maybe in curriculum night for, you know, when you've got all the sixth-grade parents there, you can spend a little bit more time on that and just say this, and maybe encourage the teachers too to use that a little bit more because some teachers do, which is great and we love that, but then they'll say, oh, well, I have this big research project that's due tomorrow that we've never even seen before.
Well, that's good feedback. I'll be perfectly honest. I was under the impression that this was very much across the board. And to hear that there are some gaps in that, you know, certainly look into it because I hear you. And I think that this is a challenge in high school as well, but there are a lot of places to go.
Right.
Trying to balance this thing between giving teachers autonomy in these areas platforms, while at the same time trying to centralize things so that it's not so real for the student and the parent. So I will take that information back.
When was Aspen developed, in the 50s?
Yeah.
I am not familiar with Aspen.
We could go on about Aspen. What has been explained to me repeatedly as I experience frustration is, you know, Aspen, it's interesting because it's this product that's built to do so many things. I mean, it's our student information systems, our data systems. It does so many things. It's how we zap all of our data to DSE and it's hard to come up with something that's intuitive and user-friendly. It does all of those things. I keep asking why it can't be as simple as shopping at the supermarket, but not really answered.
Steve, I've been asked a number of questions on the Chromebooks and I, this may not be possible to answer, but the question I've been asked, how could it be used creatively? You know, each degree, that was in math, history, and science. I don't know if anybody has a summary of some of those things that I thought could be shared with teachers. And then one teacher were creative in how to use it. And if they just saw what the other teacher was doing, we could start to share in creative ways of using it by suggesting things. I don't know if that's ever been done, but I was asked, you know, how might improve math? How might you use it in history? How could you use it in science? So if there's anyone that, you know, that had to be answering the question, you get it, but I was just based on what would be accepted. There may be a couple of teachers that are very creative and figured out that you could share that with others. The other thing is I, the comment here about you got these kids hot in the third grade coding. Even the challenges, you know, the next, you know, fourth and fifth grade before they get to the, are there other towns as advanced as we are? Because I read years ago, like Brooklyn and Newt, they have been decoding. They have thought through, you know, what can you do in the fourth and fifth grade? You know, what other options are there out there? I think it would be tremendous to be able to start, you know, thinking about that in the future and learning from what others have done maybe might be helpful if they are in fact doing it. Because it seems like the kids are saying, you know, I want to keep doing it, you know?
I agree that we can always learn from other people. I'm just gonna take a moment to, you know, acknowledge Steve's leadership in this area though, because I really think that some of these people should be learning from us, to be honest.
Oh, they will.
We, you know, I was at a DSE curriculum competing probably a year ago. We, you know, I was at a DESI curriculum convening probably a year ago. And it was about the new digital learning standards. So people from many, many districts, and they were sort of asking, show of hands, who's doing things in secondary? And I was up there raising my hand. And there were times where, you know, I was kind of the lone person in the room, which felt really good at that moment. So, you know, kudos to you and the ITCs. I think that the grade three coding in particular, that was like an idea and we went with it. And it's been a tremendous success, so.
And thank you. And to your first point, the most qualified people to answer that question are us, hardly the ITCs. Because it's their job to work with teachers to help them think about purposeful ways to integrate technology in curriculum. So we should think about a way to kind of broaden your awareness of some of the creative activities that are being done at the high school.
That was, is a big share, they may be doing it already.
No, we have mechanisms to close it.
It's really a tremendous one, but it's going on.
Can we get integrated technology into school committees over the written books? How about that for throwing one out there?
No.
Go green?
I know there's been some discussion over, over time and we have that, also.
I think we'd love to do that if you're interested in digital, let's do it.
Absolutely.
I'm just going to visit every third Friday of the month. Besides the mailman, we work from home, there's no one else.
There you go.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, you're welcome. Our next item is policy amendment to address Pregnancy Fantasy Act, second reading. And could we do second and third reading?
Yeah, so if you would like to waive the third reading, you could do that and you could act on it tonight.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion to waive that reading, second reading.
Second?
Wait, the third reading?
There were thirds, I mean, I meant the third.
Okay.
Second, the third.
She hasn't, she's coming back, right? As I take a vote, those in favor? Thank you. Moving on. Action items.
Oh, sorry, so then would you like to vote the policies tonight?
Yeah, make the motion to waive the policy, yes.
Second? Those who support voting for the policies? Okay. Next. Initial compliance certification.
Yes, so we talked about this a little bit earlier. I included the full document in your packet. It requires that the school committee chair sign on behalf of the school committee. And so the action item would be to vote to authorize the chair to sign that.
Make a motion to authorize that signing.
Second?
Second.
Right, as fast as you can.
Time to wait, Charlie.
Thank you. Next. Mr. President, nineteen salary increases for non-bargaining employees.
Do you want to say anything about that or?
Yeah, at this time of year, we have a small list of employees that are in bargaining contracts. And so I think we have this in the packet. So there's non-bargaining increases for each of those individuals who are losing.
Do you think that the recommended increases are in line with the increase, well, certainly with what we budgeted and also with what other bargaining units have been...
Is there a motion?
For the, I know there's no increases for the substitute teachers in the long term. When was the last one recently, when was that?
Last year, mid-year, two years ago.
We do market comparisons to surrounding towns and we actually think we're not just in line, but maybe even a little higher.
Put the motion to, to break.
So move.
Second? Those in favor? Student travel, China exchange.
So you have information in your packets regarding two proposed student trips for next year. And we've heard a little bit about this during public participation. So in both cases, we have already hosted students. We've hosted students from China. This would be the second part of the exchange. Similarly with France, we'd now be sending our kids to France. One thing I want to emphasize is that in both cases, the chaperones involved in the trip are also the lead curriculum advisors for the Chinese club and for the French club. So they would be, you know, working in their capacity.
How many kids would go on the trip?
Mr. Bevan, do you happen to know what the number is?
Um, I, and I don't know, I don't know that it says it in the packet. It's usually, we never go with more than ten kids per adult. And I think we would be looking at two adults, so I think we'd be looking at a maximum of twenty kids. And I think even that would be probably a higher number than we would go with. Sixteen to eighteen to twenty is like the area we would end up with.
The school committee does have a policy about chaperones just to be shared.
Not for now, but for next year, what we may want to talk about is the goals to take a look just philosophically about our philosophy on school shit. I've got a lot of questions, we may want to, we may not, not, or we may want to just kind of talk, what's our philosophy, what's our belief system, we've got a lot of new members. I don't know, if there's something you want to look at.
I would love to do that. I think that's an excellent goal, if you're answer.
And do we, do we ask, like, all these trips, the kids go back with writing up their experience, writing up what they learned? Is there any, you know, anything comes out of it that could be shared with other people? You know, they have their own experience, but, you know, maybe there's other classmates in the Chinese club that aren't going, they could learn something. Is there any effort made to say, we need a two-hundred-word paper or something to discuss your trip? You know, something like that as a follow-up?
I think we require anything.
Yeah, we don't require anything. And to be honest with you, I think the kids share so much on social media while they're in, having the experience that their stateside peers have probably a really detailed understanding of all the things they're doing. It's not really all that academic. But I think that their peers have probably a much deeper understanding of what their experience is like than any of us would have had prior to that.
On the trip, yeah, in real time.
Yeah, but it's not an academic, you know, deep dive into what their experience is like. I'm sorry? So the China trip, it will vary based on whether or not the family has hosted one or more students in the past. So the full cost is thirty-two hundred for China, twenty-five hundred if they've hosted one student, nineteen hundred if they've hosted two.
Do we have, I've asked, there's been past kids that would love to go, but can't afford that kind of money, but are there any ways of assisting?
There is, yes. We have a fund that we access to help students who might have some trouble with that.
And the experience, the last time we went?
Was excellent, yes. We got really good... Yep, we got, with China particularly, we got really good reviews from that.
Wonderful opportunity, yes.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity. Affordable for how far, you know, for the distance and the experience.
So do we follow the vote to support the trip? Would the school committee like to have a motion to support the trip to China? Second?
Second?
The French trip, any questions on the French trip?
Oh, and you can probably just take a little trip.
Yeah, exactly.
Are you leading the trip this year?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the French trip.
Second? Those in favor?
Yeah.
The school committee meeting calendar?
So we thought it might be helpful to establish our meeting dates for next year. And I actually put in your spot an updated draft. To make a couple of changes on the proposed dates for October and November. I don't know, therefore, if you have their calendars with them tonight and are able to act on it.
Whether we approve tentatively, and again, if anyone got made a date, you know, we can change it later. It's a problem. Or we just agree to this as a temporary, as a calendar?
Steve, the only question I have to start now that I ask, are we planning a summer meeting? We can think about that.
Well, why don't we talk about it? We've had a retreat type of thing, get together and talk about that. I'd like your input on, you know, we've done it before and it's been a nice opportunity too.
So we'll be changing the Wednesday, October tenth to the ninth?
Yes, so the new proposal is that the October meeting would be on Tuesday, October ninth. And then we bumped out the November meeting by a week to Thursday, February fifteenth. Everything else remained the same.
Also, if people have problems, you know, coming up, just let us know. So could we submit a motion to temporarily approve this as a working dates? Second? The minutes, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes, May seventeenth?
I think we didn't vote.
Oh, sorry. Vote, those in favor? The minutes of the last May seventeenth meeting is in the back. Any suggested changes or any motion to vote for the minutes?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the May seventeen, two thousand and eighteen minutes.
Second? Okay, well, we'll move right along. Okay, we're now at a point, any further comments? Anybody here? We've had that before, but thank you again for coming and staying here and your input. We're now going to go into an executive session, which means it's closed to everybody but the school committee. But we thank you all for coming and being with us tonight. I'll, I'll do our comments and presentations. So we're going to have an executive session in a few minutes. So thank you for coming.